This time I'll call the October 4th, 2021 County Council meeting to order the Honorable Robert Winkler from District 3 will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and invocation.
Lord, we thank you for the blessings you give us every day, for the rain it looks like we're going to get this week. We can use that for our yards and plants. We ask you for wisdom tonight as we go about the people's business and just to know what's best for each item that comes before us, what's best for the citizens of the county as a whole. And we just thank you again for all the blessings. We ask you to keep all of our first responders and men and women in uniform safe as they keep us all safe. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome. It's nice to see such a big crowd come out to County Council. At this time, we're going to move to, we have no oath of office, so we'll move to the appearances. First, we have David Lisk to address council regarding Impact York County, Clinton Action Plan, and the proposed South Side TIF.
Good evening. My name is David Lisk, and along with being the Executive Director for York County First Steps, I'm also the co-chair for Impact York County. I appreciate the opportunity to come back before this board. After the last meeting, I felt it would be beneficial to provide more background information regarding who Impact York County is, what they're trying to accomplish in our community, and also how this is related to the Clinton Connection Action Plan and the TIF request. First, Impact York County started a bit more than five years ago and was born out of a Population Health Summit sponsored by DEHEC, where the state of health of our county is presented to local organizations, working to improve overall health outcomes for our community. A number of the organizations and agencies asked how we could take the information shared and make an impact in our communities of the folks that we served. We decided to continue meeting as a coalition and see how to work together. Our members represent the entire county and include state agencies such as DEHEC and South Carolina Thrives, healthcare agencies such as Atrium and North Central Medical, and even representatives from the Federal Reserve of Richmond. Working together isn't a particularly rare thing in communities, but through my job with York County First Steps, I can say that this happens a bit more in York County and with better results than most other counties in South Carolina. Building collaborative relationships seems to have been instilled in our general way of doing business, which is partially responsible for why York County is rated so high for quality of life and also for child well-being. As Impact York County, we began to focus our attention to the prevalence of preventable chronic diseases in York County, conditions such as high blood pressure, high cholesterol, obesity, all treatable and preventable with proper awareness, screenings, healthy food options, and treatment. Untreated, these conditions lead to a large disparity in health outcomes, such as life expectancy of 67 years in one community and 77 in another. When we choose a pilot area to begin our initiative, we chose the Saluda Corridor, which is a significant portion of the South Side of Rock Hill, and it was because of the significant issues with health, and by the way, an area of significant economic disparity as well. Health and economic conditions are interrelated and serve as predictive indicators for a variety of outcomes. I have a few statistics for the York County area in general, and then also for the neighborhoods that we've talked about in the South Side. Individuals with less than high school education, countywide, it's 9.2%. It's twice as much in the Triangle, which is the Saluda Corridor, and it's 34.7% in the South Side. Single-parent households, 18% York County, 42.2% in the Triangle, and 44.9% in South Side. Median household income, $65,000 for York County, $38,000 in the Triangle, $24,000 in the South Side. Households living in rental properties, 28% for the county, 53% in the Triangle, and 58% in South Central. Please understand, I look at these differences as areas where we have significant potential for transforming lives and also generating economic growth. So as we continue our efforts that included distributing over 9,000 to 10,000 boxes of food across the county over 30 different organizations, including school districts, homeless shelters, churches, Rock Hill Housing Authority, and a multitude of nonprofits serving food insecure residents, we also are developing engagements with healthcare providers to provide preventative care approaches. Through both of these initiatives, through Impact York County, we see that comprehensive, broad collaborative approaches work best. Connecting to residents, business partners, and investors that have a vested interest in a community to prosper is also a key element. It seems to us that the Clinton Connection Action Plan is taking this type of approach. Many community residents and interests are working to balance the many elements that go into making a vibrant, growing community that generates the economic engine that transforms the lives of its residents in terms of health and economics. Is the plan perfect? Probably not, but the approach to developing and refining the plan is what is needed to make the most of the opportunity that is before us. I hope that as you review the action plan and the TIF request, that you keep in mind the broader issues at stake. This opportunity has tremendous potential that can have generational influence for many members of our county. Thank you for the service and leadership you provide to our county and the opportunity to speak with you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Lisk. At this time, we have Melinda Woodhurst with Veterans Affairs to provide counsel with the information regarding the proposed state-funded Veterans Cemetery.
Thank you. As mentioned, I'm Melinda Woodhurst, the Director of Veterans Affairs for York County, and it gives me great pleasure to provide the council with an update on where we stand with an application for a Veterans Cemetery. There's three areas that I want to cover to keep it concise. One is how did we get here? Secondly is what are our next steps? And lastly, why York County? Why would York County even be considering such an opportunity? First, the journey began with a phone call from the staff of the Secretaries for South Carolina Veterans Affairs. We got a call and we said, "We think you ought to consider an application for a cemetery up in your area." And so, the deadline was set. That came out, that phone call came at the beginning of July with a deadline set for August the 17th. If you do the math, that's 45 days to find a 60-acre donor and a couple of little studies, like a Phase 1 environmental study, and also the ability to do a land survey. So, we've had a couple of false starts during that 45-day period. We had several donors, about four donors, they backed out for various reasons, and then that led to an extension, a request for an extension of the timeline to give us an extra 60 days, which was granted by the Secretary, Secretary Grimsley. In that time, we had a really good, solid lead with Brattonsville, historic Brattonsville, so we used a little bit of that time talking to the Museum Commission, and as that turned out, after several iterations of property, it was determined that it just wasn't suitable. So literally, we were 10 minutes away from a Veterans Advisory Council where we had to concede defeat, when in fact, we got a text from a donor who saw a Facebook page on September the 19th that was posted July the 23rd. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce to you the donors, Thomas and Giovanna Purcell.
Yeah, York County couple is hoping to help local military families. WCNC Charlotte's Mike Hansen discovered how a 65-acre land donation could make it easier for families to grieve their loved ones who died after serving their country.
Way out in Bullet Creek, South Carolina, you may think it's quiet here.
Just enjoying the country.
But the locals know better. Just listen. This slice of heaven belongs to Tom and Gia Purcell. However, they're not keeping it. They say a higher power led them to give it away.
So we both prayed about it.
Getting ready to go to church last Sunday morning.
Gia saw a York County Facebook post asking for a land donation. The land would become a Veterans Cemetery, and time was running out.
I said, "What do you think?"
So I looked at her, she looked at me, she says, "I'm in." I said, "Okay."
And by that afternoon, we were able to speak with Melinda Woodhurst.
I was beyond words. I just knew. I had a dream.
Melinda Woodhurst is the Director for Veterans Affairs of York County.
How generous and gracious.
More than 28,000 veterans call York County home. Right now, the nearest Veterans Cemetery is in Anderson, a two-hour drive. Tom himself is a decorated Vietnam combat veteran helicopter pilot.
I tell people they did more for me than I ever did for them. In 1959, I was not the best young man, and the judge told me, "Son, says you either join the military or I'm going to put you in jail." We didn't give him much of a choice.
The next step is for South Carolina to give its final approval next month. Then early next year, it may become official. After environmental concerns are met, the process may start to transform this place into hollow ground.
To honor them and the service that they had for our country by showing them that last measure of respect.
I refer to Bullet Creek as my home. I like to sit made into a cemetery, some type of park for people to come out and enjoy it.
A military hero and a spouse using their land to help other veterans. Rest in peace.
It'd be wonderful.
Closer to home. Reporting from Western York County, Mike Hansen, WCNC Charlotte.
And if everything goes as planned, military burials could start in three to five years. Tom says he would like to be honored there when the time comes.
I take my supplement regimen really seri- Everyone should take supplements. Just to be clear, the donation is a combination of land that is owned by both Giovani and Thomas Purcell. So collectively, their donation, they have 105 acres and they're willing to give up to 65, whatever works. They said they will carve out whatever space to make this dream come true. Just a little bit about Mr. Purcell. He's a retired Chief Warrant Officer from the Army. He is a Huey Cobra pilot, and he ended his career as a pilot instructor. He flew missions, some of the horrific battles in Vietnam, to also include flying missions over the DMZ in Korea. He earned the Distinguished Flying Cross and the Presidential Air Medal for heroism in service in Vietnam. So now, the process began. What most people take years to do, we finally got the donation and all of the pieces of this puzzle started to fall into place. The three critical pieces was the land. The second critical piece was a land survey. We found that problematic because this land had been in the Purcell's family for over 100 years, and it was passed down through probate, and so therefore, there hadn't been a legal survey done in some time. And then the last piece of that was a Phase 1 environmental study. So you can imagine with no budget, with getting a land in less than 30 days before the due date, we had some work to do. It was again a Facebook post that we had the President of the Blue Star Mothers out of North Carolina, who had a member of her Board of Directors who worked for ESP Associates, and they agreed to do our survey. I don't know that there's any price, but there's an inference that that would not be at any cost to this project as their contributions. Secondly, we had a representative, Rose Lemons Berry. She works as a contractor for the South Carolina National Guard. She referred me to the civil engineer that works for the State Adjunit General, and just within minutes, we had a person who would do a Phase 1 environmental survey, which the documents are already coming in, and I'll have the final report by the middle of this week. So everything is on glide path. When the time comes at Phase 2, we have a real estate association who has a lead on attorneys who will help us do the actual legal transfer pro bono. So just to recap, we have about $10,000 worth of surveys. We have $400,000 in land value, and right now, the only cost to this county is $350 for one legal document that is a part of our environmental Phase 1 study, and I have Rolling Thunder, who has agreed as of Saturday to pay that bill. So far, we're on glide path. So at this point, I don't know, and I can't say that there's not going to be any future charges that we're going to have to address, but I can guarantee that if it's for free, if it's free, it's for me, and I'll try to get it donated. So we actually literally have our application ready to go, pending the arrival of those two surveys. So as I promised, there's only two more portions of the presentation, and that would be what is next. What's next is to get that turned in before the October the 14th to the Secretary. That will generate a presentation to both the Cemetery Committee on the South Carolina Veterans Affairs Staff, followed by a presentation to the Secretary himself. I call it a sales pitch. I'm confident that they'll see the value in York County. Once the county is picked, those presentations will happen between November and January, and we expect the county to be selected by February around that timeframe. Then Phase 2, the real work starts. Well, there'll be a Phase 2 environmental study, they'll do an application for a grant to federal VA, the commission of an architect, they'll get the contract for the contractor, and on and on. And then the next two years, they will actually be doing all the work for construction for a cemetery. So, South Carolina absorbs state, the state absorbs the cost. We just have to do the preliminary pre-appreciation, the things that I've mentioned, and so far, out-of-pocket cost is around $350. The next obvious question then is why York County? I don't need to tell this body here why this would be an asset for York County, but for conversation, one of the minimum requirements for the application is the density of veterans in that community. York County is home for 28,000 veterans who call York County home. Those veterans bring $180 million in federal compensation to this area. They buy their homes, their kids go to school, and they spend their money in York County. That compensation is over disability compensations, pension compensations, education compensation, education benefits per se, burial benefits, education benefits. We're very lucky that we have one college, one university, one college, and one tech school, and why not use your education benefit here where your education benefit can go much further when it comes to room and board. The second factor is the distance to a closer, to the closest cemetery. And I have two charts in your package. You have a couple of maps. This chart here is a map, it highlights Short County, but it also shows you the veterans' populations in the surrounding counties. When you look at Cherokee, Union, Chester, and Lancaster, Chesterfield's not on the chart, but they collectively bring 14,000 additional veterans to the 28,000 that are already in York County. Mecklenburg and Gastonia, you can see the number of veterans that are there. So when you add the veteran population and who could benefit from having one locally in York County, the numbers are striking. The next piece of this is the economic benefit. Behoove me to tell the economic developers in the County Council just how thriving York County is. We are growing twice the national rate, and the businesses that we are enticing to bring to York County is extraordinary. A piece of that is York County already has a Veterans Clinic, a community outpatient clinic. We are already funded at the federal level to have a new clinic built, twice its size, which is an indication of the growing population in York County. It services all those counties that you saw on that map. The map that you have in front of now is the red circles are the other five counties that are competing with York County, and you can see the veterans' populations in our area alone outmatches the counties that are competing, notwithstanding the veteran populations that are in the surrounding counties. So, Veteran, the United States Veterans Affairs already recognizes that our population is growing and giving us a brand-new clinic. The location of this, if we could go back to the previous map, you can see that it is in southwest sector of York County. That is an opportunity. You've heard, if you build it, they will come. This will be an opportunity to bring economic development in that area, notwithstanding, close to it will be Bratton, historic Brattonsville. It's about a 20, 25, 30-minute drive. They're already bringing industry and visitors to Brattonville, and they tried really hard to get this co-located. We were hoping that that would happen, but during the COVID period, they were estimating 5,000 visitors during a challenged time, coming from all over the United States. It is reasonable to expect with this cemetery that visits to one will equally be visits to the other. Community support. It is astounding and not surprising that individuals from our congressional elected officials to our delegation, our South Carolina delegation, to veterans organizations and everybody in the community to wholeheartedly support with letters showing and casting their support. I'm very proud to share that the Chairman of the House Ways and Means Committee, Senator Peeler, who had an opportunity to cast his support to Cherokee County, cast his support to York County, because he too saw the value in having the cemetery in York County. I want to show you one more video, which will be the conclusion of my presentation. I will end with saying, York County is not only the obvious choice for a Veterans Cemetery, it is the perfect choice for the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. I know on behalf of our entire council, we appreciate your heart and all of the hard work that you have put into recognizing our veterans and making sure that we take care of them. I also want to thank the Purcell family, whom I understand could not be here tonight, but at some point, we're going to have them back here so that we could recognize them personally. But our council is going to be considering a resolution once we get to our business, which hopefully, we will bump up sooner in the program, and we want to make sure that we reiterate in the form of a resolution our support for this program, and we do again appreciate all that you've done and continue to do. Thank you. This time, we'll hear from Chuck Flink to provide the Riverbend Park Master Plan.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Chuck Flink with Greenways Incorporated, and on behalf of Dan Dodd in the Dodd Studio, I'm pleased to be with you tonight to present the Riverbend Park Master Plan. Dan and I would like to dedicate tonight's presentation to Ann Springs Close, who passed away recently. Ms. Close was my oldest client. She was my client for 30 years, and did a lot of great work with her. She's a great conservationist. I had a conversation with her earlier this year, and she wanted me to pass along a message to all of you. She said, "Please tell York County that it took the Greenway 25 years to become an overnight sensation." And so, a lot of hard work went into it, and a master plan that really evolved over those 25 years, and it's a good lesson for all of us as we embark on a conversation about a master plan for Riverbend Park. We've been working here for about nine months on this master plan. A lot of hard work has gone into this. I'd like to thank Chairwoman Cox for her leadership, and I'd also like to thank Tom and Allison for their participation. That was a lot of meetings. I know you guys have a lot of meetings to go to, and we kept you busy with a lot more. But I'd also like, if it's okay, I know we have members of our steering committee in the audience tonight, and I'd like for them to stand, if they don't mind, and be recognized for all their contributions. So could you guys please stand, please? Yeah, great work. Thank you. And I want to call out Manning Kimmel, who stepped at the last minute, really saved our bacon on the generation of a public video. Thank you, Manning, for all your contributions. We began the process of the master plan by first doing a couple of things. First, a market study, and then our first round of public input. The market study is important because there are competing venues, including the Ann Springs Close Greenway, that are in proximity to this particular piece of land that was acquired by York County. And so we wanted to understand the market in terms of what's the proper amount of park development to have? What is the mix of activities that should be in a park like this? What are the expectations based on how these other parks are being operated? So that market study was important from that perspective, and it was also important in terms of taking a look at the, more or less, the national sort of activities that are going on in the outdoor industry. The outdoor industry is the fourth-largest economic concern in the United States. It's almost a trillion dollars of annual economic benefit to this country, employs a lot of people, generates a lot of taxes, and the reason for bringing this up is because I know there's always a lot of questions when a local government spends a lot of money to buy a piece of land and then goes on to develop that piece of land as a park. I see this as investment in return, and I think that these numbers really support that this is really a great investment by York County in the future of the county. We just heard a presentation about the economic benefit of Veterans Cemeteries, and there's a lot of benefits, economic benefits, that come from projects like this involving conservation. So that was important. Our very first public outreach was important to Dan and myself because we wanted to get a sense of where citizens of York County were with respect to doing a public park. And fortunately, we had about 2,000 people that responded, and I'm not going to go through the whole survey because this is in the master plan, but the responses really helped to shape the master plan program. So hearing from that many people in the county and them giving us their preferences as to how they saw this piece of land being developed was really an important first step for us. The second park survey that we did was equally as important because we had a master plan. We put it out there with the help of Manning and a great video. We put it out there for everyone to sort of take a look at. We almost had 1,000 people that participated in that survey. We almost had 1,000 people that participated in that survey, and we had, again, really great response. And I'll, I'll just focus on this. Eighty-eight percent of the people who responded to that survey agreed or strongly agreed with the recommendations of the draft master plan. And I'll, I'll just reflect, it's hard to get 80% of people in this country to agree on anything. So to have 88% of people who took this, this survey say that they liked the master plan, they liked the, the way the recommendations came forward, we thought was pretty strong affirmation of the contents of the plan. So the, the plan is, first of all, it's, it's really important for everyone to understand how, the, the conservation of this land. That was a very, very important first step. That was the one thing I, I talked to Ms. Close a lot about because she coveted this land, she really wanted to be involved in the conservation of it, and she was thrilled that it, it got conserved. And the emphasis of this master plan is that it is a nature preserve. It's, it's about outdoor access and outdoor use, and it really celebrates the outdoors. So yes, we've, we've put a, a plan of, of development on here to gain access to the, to this beautiful piece of land and to make it something that will add benefit to York County in the long run, but at the end of the day, it's really largely about conservation. And in fact, I will just tell you that, you know, if this was built today and you were able to go out and, and walk this, this park, and you were able to go over and walk the Ann Springs Close Greenway, I think you would see that there, that the imprint on the land is about the same, just to give people a sense. Because I, I know some people can say, wow, you're, you've got all this proposed development in there, but the impact will be about what you would experience if you went to the Ann Springs Close Greenway today, which is also another conservation-based project. So in the master plan, we have 11 activity zones that we've put together that make, that essentially comprise the park development strategy, and I'll, I'll go through those pretty quickly, just to hit the highlights on those. But it begins with the extension of the Cataba River Greenway along the river, which we heard was probably the, one of the biggest priorities that people wanted to have. I mean, getting into this piece of land, having access to it, and then having this incredible riverfront trail extend was a very, very high priority for a lot of people that filled out the survey and also for our committee. And then, it, it, you know, developing a 25-mile system of hiking trails within this piece of land was also very high priority. And the point of this photo is that we're, we're likely to see those trails have different types of treads, from natural surface trails to boardwalk trails, to maybe some trails that have some, some gravel or prepared surface, to, to grassland trails. So there's lots of different types of trails that are going to be provided in that regard. So, you know, the, the really, the two most important sort of leading aspects of this project is all about trails, if I can get this thing to work. Then we have these really interesting topographic features on this piece of land. This is, it's a bend in the river, and the bend is because of, of geology. And so, there's a chance to get out on some of these prominent points and, and put an observation platform so that people can get to the river and, and look over the river. We thought that was important. But probably the biggest response we got in the surveys was the ability to access this river. And we understand there's issues with that because of the way the river is being used today, but it was a really high desire from the folks who participated, both in our, in our committee and the, and the folks who took the survey. So river access, you know, getting into the river is, is critically important. Then I think when you look interior-wise, there's a chance to have a, a series of event areas. We've given everything a name, so we've given Red Oak a name, that's going to be a recreation and outdoor events area. A lot of that is going to be left natural, but given the opportunity to set it up in different ways, to host different types of events, small events, large events, that can be community-sponsored. So that's a deliberate design strategy on our part. Outdoor camping is hard to find, and I think it's going to get harder to find as time marches on in this region. So making a provision for both tent camping and some RV camping, there's not a lot of RV spots that are available in this, in this project, but I think the, the few that would be available will be well-used, and, and tent camping is another great objective for the project. There's a series of lakes that are on this property. This is the old Bow Water property, it was, it was an experimental farm. They turned up some, some dams and, and created some water supply lakes, and those can be used for all kinds of water sports, from fishing to boating. So there's some opportunity to take advantage of that. And then we just feel like environmental education is one of the great outlets for projects like this, nature-based recreation parks. I've done a few of these across the country, and we've always had a lot of success putting environmental education centers into them. They're very well-used. It's a great way of linking in with the local school system and providing that opportunity for outdoor education. We always felt like this was a, there, there's a couple of slightly commercial ventures, kind of similar to what the Ann Springs Close Greenway did with the canteen and the gateway. They created this really neat sort of commercial venture, which has been very, very successful. And we have an opportunity on this property to do the same, so we've called it the Lodge. It's a multi-purpose building with an event center that's around it, that could host weddings and all kinds of other sort of events that are quite popular, and, you know, venues that are really hard to find in rapidly-growing communities. So that's that. And then mountain bike is one of the fastest-growing recreation pursuits in the country. We, we find mountain bike parks really springing up everywhere. It's, it's a very high-desired activity, and it's very difficult to find really good-quality mountain bike parks. So this is an opportunity, in my opinion, for York County to build on a biking heritage around Rock Hill that's already there, and expand that out to include a really high-quality mountain bike park. And then the last thing, which is, which is a sort of a, it's, it's a, it's a brainstorm, is the opportunity to do something really unique and build a luxury motor, motor coach park. Now, the way to think of this is it's, it's a very, very high-end hotel in which people bring their own beds. Essentially, this is, this is gaining traction across the country, but there are not many of these that are located in urban areas. So there's an opportunity for York County to offer one of these and pair it with other kinds of events and activities that are going on in the region, such as your pro-sporting events, Panthers games and Hornets games, and Wells Fargo Golf Championships and such. And it's not, this is not a very big imprint on the land, and I have a feeling that a lot of these sites, if you're successful in developing these sites, will be really fully leased out throughout the year, because I think there's a market for this, and that market is growing. So that was, that sort of rounds out the, the entire park, the 11 activity zones. Now, the park budget, we've, we've set a budget, and it is a budget, and we basically listed every one of these activities out. We've run sort of what we call current values of construction on, on this, and we've come up with a, a number for every one of those activity zones, and we even also have park operations in here as well. So the total budget is $52 million, which is a lot of money unquestionably. It's going to be something that, the way that we have it programmed is spent over 15 years, and we believe that, that York County would be eligible to apply for and receive matching funds. So we think that there's a lot of funds out there to support this kind of park development, both at the federal and state level, and there might even be private donors that would be interested in participating. So we don't see this budget as being totally on the backs of York County, but we see York County being able to use its dollars to leverage funds into the, into the development program. And we also have a phasing plan that we've put together that sort of guides you through how we expect the money would be spent and how different aspects and phases would be brought online. Interestingly, when we put the final survey out, well, even the first survey and the second survey, and we got sort of an understanding of what the, what the public wanted, the phase one is really that expression. It's, 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 it's really getting in here and developing the Park Loop Road, it's developing the Cataba River Trail, the hiking trails, et cetera. It's a fairly low-impact start to the process, and it involves around $16 million, $15, $16 million development. Phase two is a more robust plan. That's where we begin adding a lot more elements into the park development strategy, and that is six to 10 years out from today, and that's about a $22 million program of development down the line. And the final phase is essentially whatever is not accomplished in phase three is developed, but the luxury motor coach park is in that final phase, and that's 11 to 15 years out. Now, the interesting thing about phases is those phases can, can be accelerated if more money is found, if other project partners are found, people get excited about certain elements, but that's the phasing that we've sort of put together. We also put into the master plan a next steps, and the park steering committee has already recommended to county council that the, the plan be adopted. We recommend adoption because when you adopt a plan like this, you sort of open the, you have the keys to the vault, and you can go out and do certain types of, of grant applications and bring money in on a matching basis. So that's why adoption's important in that regard. And we would hope that York County would then approve the phase-one development strategy and begin working on a set of construction documents for developing that, that first phase of park development. And that might involve working with a grant writer to apply for certain grants that are available. I think there's going to be, there already is a lot of money available in the stream, and I think there will be more coming up. So it's a good chance to, to do that. And then there's some other stuff in phase one in terms of working with local utility providers that are onsite and getting water and sewer out to the site. That is going to be important as the, as the project gets underway. So that is a quick overview of the, the master plan. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have of me, or, or if, if you have any questions of Dan. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chuck. Before we do that, I do want to say thank you to you and Dan Dodd for all of your time. It was a lot of meeting, and I am very pleased to see that our entire steering committee showed up tonight to, to appear. A lot of those folks, and I think it's important to mention them by name, Manning Kimmel, Ryan Sanderson, Tom Dissington, Jan Angel, Jack Leitner, Jason Rattery, David Oxendine, and Craig Crays. I really do, I know our committee and our council appreciates the time and effort that you volunteered for this. Also want to make sure that I mention a few folks since we've got a lot of people in here, York County Forever Commission, Chair Lindsay Walker, he was instrumental in helping find this, and I, I believe he's here tonight too. Nations for Atlanta, Steve Hamilton, and that board, I see a lot of those board members here tonight, I appreciate you being here. One of the things I asked was because there was a lot of folks that were calling before we closed the agenda to speak, and be, we would have an appearance list a mile long, so I asked folks to, who wanted to speak, who got here early enough and put their name on the list to do it in the public forum session. And I see that we're full of lots of different issues, but that, that would at least keep our council from getting exhausted from so many comments. Community residents, our fire departments, and all those who volunteered time throughout this, we've had three years' worth of other meetings and, and public meetings, appreciate them stepping up, and I see many of them here tonight. And last but not least, but our county management, our CFO, who worked really hard to find a way to do this without raising any taxes, using an existing tax revenue stream for the original purchase. And I also want to have a special thanks for our prior council members and our existing council who's been working on this, who had the vision, you know, three years ago to do this. I see that Dr. Britt Blackwell is here, sitting over to the left, it's important to recognize him. He was the chair at the time the initiative began and that we started that. Senator Michael Johnson, who, who wasn't a senator back then, but he, he had the vision, he's sitting here with us as well. And I believe Chad Williams said he was going to be here, but I haven't seen him in the, in the lookout room. So I think all of the council members who were part of this, very thankful for them. We do have a good bit of folks who want to speak on the public forum, but if there are any questions that y'all want to ask, we, this is another item that we're looking to bump up, since I know you need to get on the road, and we have a lot of people who are here for this initiative who may not get a chance to speak. I guess I'll just do this, folks who are here to support the Riverbend Initiative, if you want to stand up and be recognized, and, and then that way, if, if you'll just stand up, because a lot of you aren't going to be able to speak here tonight, and I wanted to make sure that, that you're at least noted, and that, we appreciate you being here.
So Kristi, I'd like to just follow up real quick on that.
Of course, of course.
I want to thank you. The, the hard work of everybody across the board was phenomenal on this, and I just second everything Kristi said. The camaraderie and the process that we went through to evaluate and the questions that were asked, and what was put back and forth, I thought that it was a good exchange of ideas across the board. So kudos to everybody across the board on, on that work. I also want to thank the public. The public was, with the, the amount of people that stepped up and, and responded to our surveys was phenomenal. So again, I want a, a big shout-out for the public also. So thank you all.
Thank you, Chuck. At this time, we'll move to the public forum session of our meeting, and I'll just let folks understand that this is an opportunity for individuals to get up and speak. You are limited to two minutes. When you reach the podium, if you will please state your name and give your address, and, and this is the main rule, please, please stop at two minutes. You will see these blinking lights at the top of the screen that will let you know when your two minutes is up. I absolutely hate cutting people off. I feel rude and ugly, and I don't like doing that. And so, if you would please make a point to stay within your time limit so that we can get moving on to other council business, I would appreciate it. And the first individual up is Lindsay Walker.
Thank you, Kristi, and thank you for your kind words. I thank York County for the privilege to serve and for their recognition. You sent me a certificate of appreciation earlier. All of us at York County Forever Commission, as York County's conservation agency, are deeply committed to all that makes York County a special place to live and raise a family. During my tenure on the commission, we were able to conserve several thousand acres through purchases and conservation easements. However, the highlight of my seven years of service was York County Forever Commission spearheading the acquisition of Riverbend Park. Working closely with county staff, county council, and the community, they have achieved this lasting legacy that will benefit present and future generations. Based on my analysis to support this acquisition, empirical studies showed that properties near green space increase in value by approximately 20%, that most municipalities spend more on infrastructure than tax revenues they would receive from new developments. Also, corporations located near green space reduce their employee health costs by approximately 10%. Environmentally, Riverbend Park as an ecological preserve helps ensure clean water and protects endangered wildlife and vegetation. Notably, Riverbend was purchased with innovative financing at no additional cost to taxpayer thanks to County Treasurer Kevin Madden. I am proud to have served, and I thank York County for the privilege, the county staff for their assistance and advice, with a special thank you to County Treasurer Kevin Madden, former Chair Dr. Britt Blackwell, as well as current and former council members. I thank York County Forever Commissioners, who I've had the honor to work with as their chairman the last several years. I will be forever grateful for having had the opportunity as a citizen of York County. York County and acquiring Riverbend is on the leading edge of a nationwide trend, as parks across the country are experiencing explosive growth. Recognizing the huge economic benefit and ecological value of green space, this forward vision needs to be continued, as York County has only preserved approximately 12,000 of its total 418,000 acres.
Thank you, Lindsay. Very good. Ryan Sanderson.
Good evening. My name is Ryan Sanderson. My address is 5272 Woodside Drive, Rock Hill, South Carolina. And I'll see if I can't knock this out in under two minutes. We'll be short, sweet, to the point. I would like to thank everybody for the opportunity and the privilege to serve on the committee for the Riverbend Park. And I, I'd like to let you know that I come before you today as a husband, I come before you today as a father and a business owner. And the reason I mention those roles is because those roles play an important part in why we decided to live in York County. All those things come into consideration when looking for the place that you're going to live, raise your kids, build your business. And I'm excited to say that we chose York County because York County, there are so many good things in York County. You've got good schools, you've got good quality of life, you've got good opportunities. And because of those opportunities, and because we chose to live in York County, there's also a responsibility to serve, but a responsibility to help continue to make York County great. I love York County, it's growing, we've talked about it tonight, the economic development is unprecedented. However, I believe that the recreational development, the opportunities for mental and physical health should match that growth. And when I look at my kids and raising my kids, I'd like to make sure that we have an opportunity for my kids to enjoy York County and make York County great the same way that I made the decision to live here because York County is good. And I'm very simply going to ask that the county does, in fact, support the resolution to adopt this master plan, because I do believe it is important to the legacy of York County and continuing to make York County great, so that not just me and the people that are here will call York County home, but our children will call York County home as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Craig Crays.
My name is Craig Crays, and I live at 3480 Marshall Road.
My name is Craig Crays, and I live at 3480 Marshall Road in Rock Hill, South Carolina. And I'm a very proud resident of York County. I love this county, and I'm very grateful that the York County Council had the vision to buy that land and preserve it for generations to come. In the years to come, no one is going to remember the debates that will be had, no one will remember the struggles over budgets, no one will remember a lot of the work that is being done here. But if you can think forward, imagine that stressed young adult who needs to escape a busy work schedule, needs to escape technology, who goes out there and in the serenity of nature can reconnect and find peace. Imagine that young family that takes their kids out there to explore nature. Imagine that large family that has a family reunion at this park and re-makes, makes those connections. Imagine the school kids, they're on field trips. Imagine the companies that take their employees there for recreation, for team building, and for leadership development. And imagine us as a community at large, there celebrating festivals and celebrating this great nation. I invite you to think about that, and I hope that you will make the decision here this day to adopt this master plan. Now undoubtedly, there will be more questions than we will have answers, but I believe the decision that this council is making, the steps that you'll be making in the coming months, is to plant the seed of this park. And like all things in nature, we allow them to grow. We allow them to grow organically. The patrons that will come to the park will tell us what they want more of. We'll be able to evolve and pivot, and over time, this park will bloom into a jewel that will not only benefit us economically, not only benefit us ecologically, but will benefit us in making us a healthier and stronger community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crays. Dean Fail.
Hey, I'm Dean Fail. I live at 3044 Wexford Drive here in Rock Hill, or York County, in Councilman Chairman Cox's district. Also, I'm president of the York County Regional Chamber of Commerce and formerly president of the Lancaster County Chamber of Commerce. And I actually was asked to come here and speak in that regard from my former work, because I was contacted several years ago when this park first began being discussed. And we had groups that took inner-city visits to numerous communities to look at parks of this nature and the impact that they could have on not just the citizens' quality of life, but economic development for Lancaster County. One place we went particularly was Danville, Virginia. While we were there, we heard economist, chief economist of Rice University, talk about the value of investing in parks of this nature. He specifically cited that it was important for a county to have those key infrastructure items. You must have the roads, you must have the water, and you must have the sewer to attract business. But once you invest in quality-of-life initiatives like parks such as this, then your return on investment becomes that much greater. And what it does is it actually addresses one thing that's on the York County Regional Chamber's strategic plan, and that's talent development. Three areas of talent development that we're focused on is development, retention, and recruitment. To retain and recruit talent to this area, you must have strong quality-of-life initiatives. This will help us for many, many years to continue to attract talent and keep talent here to support our businesses, and we believe that's important. Thank you.
Thank you, Dean. Jan Angel.
Officials, please put two minutes on the clock. I'm Jan Angel. I live at 3090 Lake Wiley Drive here in Rock Hill, South Carolina. Proud to be a member of York County resident. York County has always been a family-oriented community. We have a variety of festivals, sports, arts, and activities for all ages, which has awarded us a great quality of life. For that to happen, government officials, citizen volunteers, and local businesses bonded together for the good of all. York County has become the amateur athlete avenue of the Carolinas. We offer softball, soccer, BMX racing, cycling, disc golf, cornhole, quidditch, and now with a new sports complex, basketball and volleyball tournaments will be coming. It took bold action to build these facilities, but we need more to accommodate our growth. This pandemic has taught us more than ever, we need to unplug and get outside. We need to get away from the mind-bending screens and into sports and nature. Families need affordable activities to enrich their relationships and their lives. I brag that our York County Council had the foresight and bravado to purchase 1,900 acres on the Catawba River to create our grandest park yet. We have a great template to follow with the Ann Springs Close Greenway, which is already having to make overflow parking for their overflow parking. We have seen the Greenway grow and evolve over the past two decades, and we can do the same, only better. Forests have been leveled, green pastures have been sacrificed to accommodate York County's tremendous growth. Our park on the Catawba River will guard and preserve irreplaceable natural environments, yet will also offer hiking, kayaking, birdwatching, outdoor classrooms, cross-country trails, biking, festival space, and so much more on five, five beautiful miles of glistening shores on the Catawba. I applaud your foresight and boldness to create an innovative expansive green space that future generations of York County residents will cherish and enjoy. I pray that you will continue the momentum and move to approve Phase One, Two, and Three of this proposal. Thank you, County Council.
Thank you, Jan. Manning Kimmel.
Members of council, thank you. I don't know what else I can add to this. Just some thank yous. I want to thank you for first letting me work on this committee. It was a lot of fun, and it was an interesting challenge. I want to thank you, as others have already, for the foresight that you and previous councils had to make the biggest purchase probably in York County's history and to dedicate it and preserve it for future generations. It is very, very important, and that took a lot of wisdom. And for giving us the expertise to work with us as a committee to help shape the plan that Chuck Flink just outlined to you. Without Chuck Flink and Dan Dodd, we probably wouldn't have the quality that you've seen in this presentation tonight. I also want to make you aware, as surely you are, about this growth, and this is just some new information that popped up here over the weekend. The Charlotte Regional Business Alliance, which is 15 counties under this umbrella organization, is now predicting by the year 2050 that the Charlotte region will double its population to four and a half million people. Most of that growth is going to come in York and Lancaster Counties. It's absolutely amazing, the growth we've had the last 10 years, and more of it's on its way. So more pressure than ever will be on all the public recreation facilities that we need to accommodate this growth. And lastly, I want to thank you for what I know that you're going to do to follow up on what you've already done. You've made a tremendous investment in this property, and I know that you're not going to let that investment be anything except what it potentially could be. And I thank you for all that you've done and all that you will be, because we definitely need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Manning. Jessica Muller.
Hi, I'm Jessica Muller. I live at 3320 Leslie Highway in Rock Hill. I'm the leader of a homeschool nature group called Wild and Free, which is part of a larger international group. There are about 10 other similar groups in the Charlotte area, and my group represents about 30 active families. If there is a park, Greenway, or hiking trail in York County, we either know about it or have visited it numerous times. We frequent Greenways, state parks, preserves, national forests in both North and South Carolina, traveling anywhere from one to three hours away to find places to hike. Now, why? Our aim is to not only provide our children with hiking experiences, but time in nature to understand, appreciate, and interact with the natural world. Everything from species to ecology to care for the environment, and we believe access to outdoor spaces is the best way to instill both wonder and responsibility. This is becoming harder and harder to do in York County. As the county continues to grow and overbuild, we are losing the land, destroying natural habitats, and building at a rate our infrastructure cannot keep up with. And what does that leave us with? We'll have paved the Piedmont to put up a parking lot. The families of Wild and Free would love to see greater hiking spaces and natural spaces in our own county. But we're not only concerned about how the Greenway will benefit us, but that it will also protect the river, preserve the land, as well as cultivate and conserve the natural flora and fauna of our region. To preserve the natural spaces in our community is to preserve part of ourselves. To neglect to do so is to disassociate ourselves from our place. We become users rather than whole beings in cooperation with the land. So council, you have a decision before you, and I hope you will approve this plan, that we protect the land, preserving it for future generations, and we seek to do good, to steward not only the good of the people of York County, but also the land that we call home. And what legacy will you leave for the generations of not only my children, but the many other children of York County? Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Cindy Helms.
My name is Cindy Helms. I live at 2276 Williford Road in Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm sorry, I'm changing the topic, but my husband, I'm here today to discuss the City of Rock Hill annexation of two proposed areas. My husband and I own property on Williford Road and Mount Holly Road, and we'll be affected by the City of Rock Hill's TIF proposal and annexations of the Porter Road and Mount Holly Road areas. I am here today to ask the York County Council to help fight on our behalf, because I am currently not a resident of the City of Rock Hill. I have no voice with them, so I'm asking that you would be our voice. There are several issues that affect us directly, the first one being water and sewer. The City of Rock Hill would run water and sewer lines out there, and a county resident, if a septic tank or a well would go out, DHEC would deny a permit for us to replace that well or septic tank, which would force us to tap onto the city water and sewer system at great expense. But the city would deny that unless you signed an annexation agreement. That annexation agreement would mean that I would not fight and would approve annexation if they ever wanted to come to my area, and I do not want them to. If I wanted to live in the City of Rock Hill limits, I would have bought property there. Number two, our properties are currently zoned agricultural. We raise livestock, we grow gardens, we bale hay, and this is not allowed in the City of Rock Hill zoning. It would completely change my way of life and that of my families. Most importantly, though, number three, both of our properties are family land. My husband's family has been on their property for over 100 years and six generations. My property has been in our family for four generations. We want future generations and a future part of our family to be able to own and live on this property and do those same types of activities. But with increased property taxes, water and sewer fees, and zoning restrictions, we would not be able to afford to keep this property, and that is just not right.
Thank you, Ms. Helms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Veek. I think I pronounced that correctly.
Hi, my name is Tim Veek. I'm the executive director and CEO of Habitat for Humanity of York County. I live at 204 Pelham Lane in Fort Mill, South Carolina. And I had the honor earlier today of standing on the steps of the State House to speak in recognition of World Habitat Day, which the governor proclaimed in South Carolina, which spoke to the recognition of the importance of equitable access to decent, affordable shelter in communities in which individuals can thrive. So I come to you tonight in that same spirit, as a resident of the county in Fort Mill area, representing a nonprofit organization that has and is engaged in housing and community development work in each of the districts you represent to enhance equity and opportunity in our county. More specifically, Habitat has invested over $2 million in the creation and preservation of affordable ownership, owner-occupied housing and community development initiatives in the south side of Rock Hill. Based upon that investment and community engagement, I can confidently say that I support the Clinton Connection Action Plan and the utilization of the south side TIF to achieve the goals and objectives of the plan, and I humbly ask you to do the same. On that note, I want to clarify a few points that were raised on the county's website in relationship to the TIF that seem to me to call its intent into question. Those points were that 59% of the proposed TIF area is in the county and not the city, that TIF funds can be used anywhere in the city, and that property taxes of currently undeveloped land will be used to repay debt. Some of the reality to that situation is, is of the 732 parcels that are included in the TIF, less than 30 are in the county. Some of the county properties are larger, but less than 30 are in the county. Also, one very important thing to note is that the Clinton Connection Action Plan Committee and the movement itself is committed to its role of holding the city accountable to use the funds generated by the TIF within the boundaries of the south side TIF district, and more specifically, the boundaries of the Clinton Connection Action Plan through prioritization of those goals and through a community benefits agreement. So as the county's seen a path to support previous TIFs, I believe this is an opportunity in particular that speaks to the character of our community. We want to create and to ensure equitable opportunity comes to the south side of Rock Hill. I ask, as we consider quality-of-life enhancements in our community, let's be sure that we prioritize our greatest resource, our people. Please join me in making sure the south side of Rock Hill has next.
Thank you, Mr. Veek. Alvin Starnes.
Hi, my name is Alvin Starnes. I reside at 1879 Oakdale Road. My parents have owned this land for 70, 75 years, and now they want to put it in the city. And if it's any way at all possible, I need you to help me stop this. I can't afford their taxes on it. My taxes are going to be doubled. They told me that I couldn't move back on it unless I had everything fixed, and I can't afford it right now. I'm retired. I don't have the money to redo everything they want done, and I just need to see if y'all work with us to stop this annexation. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starnes. Brad Ross.
Hello, Brad Ross. I reside at 327 Eagle Goleo Drive. This is out in the southeast corner of the county, near Pine Tuck Golf Course and Mount Holly Road. 14 years ago, I moved from the City of Rock Hill to this part of the county to get away from development. I thought I was relatively safe with the golf course and the surrounding properties. However, development is coming. Last Thursday, the Kettlesong developers had a meeting to explain what they proposed to do for that Pine Tuck Golf Course property, and they said that they had a vision. It's different from my vision for the area, and they said what they're proposing is much better than what could be possibly placed out there. I don't know what could be placed out there. You know, we can't stop the development, but we should be able to control it and manage it. And that can be done within the framework of the county. I was told Kettlesong cannot happen without water and sewer, and City of Rock Hill controls the water and sewer. And to get the water and sewer, annexation must happen. That is a mandate from the City of Rock Hill. So I had an idea for you, for the council, that can help us residents to try to consider and discuss among yourselves a way to reach out to the City of Rock Hill to see if we can rescind this mandate on annexation for the water and sewer. That way, we citizens can have some say in how the golf course is going to develop and all the other surrounding area out in the southeast corner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Donnie Christopher.
My name is Donnie Christopher. I live at 2170 Strawberry Road in Rock Hill. That's known as the Mount Holly Community, Mount Holly Methodist Church, and everybody knows where Nichols Store is. So I've been a resident there for almost 50 years, and I've gone through just about every meeting there has been about the annexation process at this point in time. I think Kettlesong's a good idea, but I don't think running over some residents like Alvin is a way to get there. There's better ways. And what we're doing here tonight is asking you, the council of York County, come out and try to help us. Let's all put our minds together on this and try to figure out a better plan, just saying, boom, we're going to, we're going to take this one, this one, this one. I look at this map, and you look at the county and the city, get a 911 call, where are they going to go? This map zigzags back and across 901, all the way down 901. This map zigzags back across 901 all the way down 901. Pretty simple if you've got a physical address, but it's not simple if you've got a wreck. And it's just, it's not too quick because we've known for a long time about it. But we've also said in just about every one of these meetings, why doesn't the council, the city council and the York County Council get together and develop a comprehensive plan for this whole area? I've seen your plan. I've been to the meetings about your plan and how it exists and whatever. But with the new annexation coming in along I-77, it kind of deters that plan. It goes beside that plan. I just think there needs to be a lot more discussion between the residents, the business owners, which are extremely important, and the county councils and the city councils. And I just don't see us doing it by getting a notice in the mail that says, okay, we're annexing you to the City of Rock Hill. That's our notice to you. So I don't appreciate it. I never, I don't ever intend on being in the county. Unfortunately, where I live, I don't have to. But I have four properties that are affected by this. I'm here representing Mount Holly United Methodist Church. I'm here representing Nickel Store. And I'm here representing myself as a concerned citizen. And I thank you for listening for it.
Thank you, Mr. Christopher. Steve Hamilton.
Thank you, council. My name is Steve Hamilton. I'm the Executive Director of Nation Ford Land Trust. I live at 1072 Silver Gold Drive in TDK. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight on Riverbend property. In December 2018, York County bought 19,000 acres of riverfront property on the Rock Hill side of the Catawba River. Just over a year later, in February of 2020, the council placed the majority of the property into a conservation easement with us, Nation Ford Land Trust. Your easement is now our third largest conservation easement. First place is the Stuck family in the York area, 3,851 acres, which the county helped us fund that project. Second place is the Ann Springs Close Greenway at 2,000 acres. And if you're interested, fourth place is county's very own Worth Mountain at 16,000, or 1,647 acres in the Hickory Grove area. York County has preserved a lot of land over the years with the help of operating arm, York County Forever Commission. This land conserving achievement is something very, is very, something that the county council should be very proud of. I want to thank this council for creating this particular project. I think it was one of the most monumental decisions that York County Council has ever made. It's going to have a lasting legacy on the area. The design is very exciting. You have nine miles of existing trails already in place with another 30 miles planned. The site has six miles of riverfrontage. Nation Ford Land Trust was founded to preserve the river. And here you are getting six miles. This is just a wonderful thing. Everything is in place to make this one of the premier destinations in the county and the state. I go to work every day at the Ann Springs Close Greenway because it's where my office is. It's a beautiful place to visit, and I'm delighted that I get to work there. I am excited that the Riverbend Park project will be modeled after the Greenway. But just remember, it took 25 years for the Greenway to become what it is today. This council and future councils get to build and develop the park over many years. Take your time and do it right. Time is on your side. The tough part's over. You've already purchased the land. You've placed it into a conservation event. You've developed a plan for the future. Now all you have to do is implement it. Good luck, and again, thank you for your vision for York County.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. David Blue.
My name is David Blue. I attended the meeting Thursday. And we looked at several different things over there. And what we looked at was who was picked to vote on this annexation and who was excluded. As Craig said while we were there, that there was people on the main road going in that were opted out. And I asked him, why? Friends and neighbors? Okay. I said, was the reason they'd vote no? He said, yes. I asked him again. I said, so you stacked a deck on the vote? And he said, yes. It's called a donut hole. Reminds me of Miller Pond. When they said, he said they wouldn't allow that anymore, and now they're going to allow it. Good day.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. David Angel.
Good evening. Thank you, council. First of all, thank Brandon Guffey for allowing me to serve on the board for the CVC. Convention and Visitors Bureau has been most successful in helping the development of our area and all parts of the county. I ask you tonight, I come to ask you to reconsider more a permanent funding vehicle for the CVC, that we remain under the guise of the county council so that we can serve the entire county. We need to have a more permanent funding vehicle so that, for three reasons. First of all, so that we can attract events and things in the future. These things are usually two to three years out. And then if we have permanent funding and we know it's going to be there, we're going to be able to attract these international and national events. Secondly, we'll be able to serve all of the county, all the different parts of the county, not just the City of Rock Hill. And lastly, to maintain and keep our most professional and talented staff. They have proven their creativity, their hard work, and their professionalism. We have seen the results with all the things that have happened so far. In regards to Riverbend, I like to see it called Catawba Bend, by the way. Something different. But this is another part of what the CVC is going to be involved in. With all the other parts, Nation for Land Trust, the other lands, these are things that we will be involved in as the CVC, as a convention and visitors bureau, to attract people to our area. I won't see the benefit of this. Like Ms. Ann said, 25 years for an overnight success. I won't see the benefit. My children will. My grandchildren will. And I ask you to invest in them. But as you go forward, also remember, we need to make sure we do the infrastructure to build access to that as we develop that. So we don't have the same situation we did out of Ebenezer Boat landing. Just a little footnote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Angel. That concludes our public forum session. And I think what we're intending to do is to make a motion on consent. One item, we do need to have number five should read, number five in consent should read third reading. And if we can bump up some of these items to get our public on the way.
I was going to say, if we, before we get into that, I would like to make the motion to suspend the rules to allow new business items, number one and number two, to be voted on immediately following the consent agenda. So it'll be moved on the agenda to immediately behind consent agenda.
Need a second? Second up?
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, none. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve with the previously mentioned revision to item number five.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing, none. We will move to item number one under new business. Council to consider and adopt a resolution of the York County Council to receive, accept, and adopt the Riverbend Park Master Plan as presented by the Riverbend Park Steering Committee to authorize York County management, personnel, and/or other designated to initiate the implementation of park development phasing, specifically Phase One, as detailed within the plan for the purpose of fulfilling the long-term plan to transform 1,900 acres along the Catawba River into an outdoor recreation area and nature-based park and preserve benefiting the citizens and visitors to York County for generations to come and to address other matters relating thereto.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah. My biggest concern is moving forward without the infrastructure. I definitely, as we continue to move forward, I want to make sure that we have roads going out there and the infrastructure in place. It does us no good to have this great place for everyone to come to if everyone can't get there.
That's what we clear.
All right. And I just want to say, there's been a lot of talk tonight about everybody that voted for this and had the foresight to vote for it. I'm the only person sitting up here tonight and the only council member who was sitting up here in 2018 who voted against this purchase. And the reason I voted against the purchase at that time is we had no idea for funding, or we had the funding in place. We had no idea for a plan or how we were going to use the land or what we were going to do. And I felt like we had, we were putting the cart before the horse. I think tonight, we've seen that we've got the cart and the horse in the right order now. And hopefully, they're pulling in the right direction. So I will be supporting this this evening.
Ms. Love.
I just want to say that I think this is a great thing for York County, for all of York County. I think people are going to drive from far, far away to visit this park. Whatever the name is, I think people are going to come and visit this. I feel like, you know, infrastructure is a very important aspect of everything that we do in the county. And just to address what Mr. Guffey said is, you know, I also feel like those who wait to be able to afford children to have them often never have them. So I think that the dedication of this council, of past council members, and the vision is huge. I am so proud of everybody up here. I'm proud of the, to have been on that steering committee. And these two guys sitting on the front row right here are my heroes. They've put together a great plan. They've worked with us. They've made us do homework, which I don't like homework. But I did it, and I feel like we've come a long, long way as a county, as a council, and as a community in approving this tonight.
Mr. Roddy.
Real quick, I want to say I supported this purchase. I've had the pleasure of being on both sides when my company, Bowwater, owned it. And now I'm on the side where York County owns it. And I'll say this to Dr. Blackwell and Senator Michael Johnson and other colleagues sitting up here is that this committee has made us look like geniuses. Because they have worked a plan that we never would have set out and laid this plan out in the initial phase of purchasing it. And I thank the committee who put in the hard work, time, and dedication to make this happen. When I first saw the presentation several weeks ago, I was blown away then. And then now to hear some more in-depth talk and conversation about it and see the overwhelming community support, I think this is definitely part of the reason why I got on council for these types visionary projects. I'm proud to support it. Hopefully, my son and his kids will get to enjoy it just as much as we all will get to see it come to fruition and develop over the course of the years, the 15-year layout plan. But we can't, like Brandon said, we can't forget about the infrastructure, making sure we focus in and making sure this thing is done right. And I think with the people that's been involved so far, I won't overlook the infrastructure needs and how to develop it going forward. And I just don't want to miss the opportunity to start laying the tracks. We got the plan in place. Let's work the plan. And obviously, I think this is definitely a game changer because all we've heard over the last several years is that companies looking to come here now are looking for community amenities. We're looking to bring in corporate headquarters, and they want to be able to use this type of drawing card to recruit employees. We want to use this kind of drawing card to recruit companies. So I think it's a perfect fit. But we, county council, never would envision this type of activity being able to go on this site. And so definitely, hats goes off to Lindsey and everybody who gave an ounce of their time to make this happen. So I look forward to watching this thing happen just as well as we're looking forward to watching several other great things that's coming to York County unfold right before our eyes. But thanks, you guys have really made us look really awesome by putting this plan together. So thank you.
Mr. Hamilton.
One of the things that I love about York County is the fact that there are so many people in the community who are otherwise very busy and productive people who are still willing to give their time in efforts to make this county even better. So to everyone out there who served on the community, on the steering committee, and the public who participated in the surveys, I'm very grateful. And I share everyone's enthusiasm and excitement for this project. My only fear is that everyone's absolutely 100% correct that even with this great project, the demand will far exceed the available supply of outdoor spaces in York County. Manning, you mentioned the growth. And I think even where we are right now, the demand will exceed the supply. So what I don't want is for this park and for this county and this community to be a victim of our own success. And we did have the forethought and the foresight, or this council was prior to my engagement on council, but this council did vote to acquire this property, which did obviously take a whole lot of vision. But I want to make sure that that vision isn't blinded by our enthusiasm for the project and our excitement to see the end goal. And I really want to make sure that this plan, as it comes together, does include that infrastructure to get out there because I do think the demand is going to be great. And I don't think that the way, or any plan that we currently have for any roads in that direction can accommodate the demand. And I don't think that we have the plan to pay for the 52 million, if my math is correct, let alone the operating costs of operating this park, let alone providing the security for the fine folks who will be out there using the park. So my hope is, we talk about carts and horses. If we get too far ahead of ourselves here with this plan, that that, the horse won't even be able to see the cart. And that, you know, we won't have the ability to get out to use this beautiful piece of property. And our roads will just be destroyed by RVs or lord knows what heading out there to enjoy it. So I have a lot of concerns with supporting it, not because I disagree with the plan or the vision, but because I think we're only about a third of the way through the plan itself. And someone mentioned the easy part was done. Surely, the easy part was done with getting this plan together. But, you know, there is definitely some heavy lifting to do. I want to make sure we don't lose sight of that.
That's about it?
Yeah. So again, I just want to piggyback off what everybody said here. I mean, phenomenal cooperation and partnership across the board. Quality of life in our area is critical. Opportunity to be outside, to know that we have these areas, including this park, along with all the other parks that we have, that we have become a destination for outside activity from within our state, which is phenomenal. So again, I want to thank everyone, everybody's hard work. It was an honor being on the committee. Great collaboration across the board. And again, thanking the community for all their input as we went through this. Thank you.
Well, I'll wrap it up to say, this land belongs to you. It belongs to the people. This is one of the rare opportunities for the people to have control over their destiny instead of large companies coming in and doing what was originally planned there, which was just more of the housing. One of my favorite quotes is from Ronald Reagan. He says, "Preservation of our environment is not liberal or conservative challenge. It's common sense." And I think since I've served on this council, my philosophy and my understanding of all this has changed a little. But I think this is a critical step for our county to do what we say we want to do, which is to control our growth, to make the quality of life a key factor in our community everywhere. And tonight, we take a step to get this park that was paid for by the people open for them to use. There's been some questions and concerns raised about the infrastructure. I think if you'd been at the meetings, you would have been able to hear Chuck Flink and Dan Dodd say that this Phase One, which is what we're approving, can be accomplished within the budget that we set for our strategic plan at the outset of this year. And I see them nodding. We can certainly do that. I think with a plan, we are able to get more funding for the Phase Two and Three that come along. But we need to get this property in the hands of the people who own it, and we need to get them on there now. So I will certainly support this. And I again want to say thank you to each and every one of you out here who has supported this. This is a huge benefit to our citizens, and it is something that I don't even think all of us are going to be able to fully appreciate. I think our kids will, though. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One. Motion passes six to one. Thank you, and thank you all for coming out. Counsel to adopt a resolution in support of the state-funded Veterans Cemetery in York County to direct York County management and staff to assist the Director of York County Veterans Affairs to the furthest extent practical in her pursuit of a York County-based Veterans Cemetery, and to provide for other matters relating thereto.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Do we want to read the? Yeah, Mr. Winkler, since this is your district, should have, should have made everyone remember, because I think they would have remembered just after that. If you would please do the honor, since this is in your district, of reading the resolution.
It's a resolution in support of the state-funded Veterans Cemetery in York County to direct York County management and staff to assist the Director of York County Veterans Affairs to the furthest extent practicable in her pursuit of a York County-based Veterans Cemetery and to provide for other matters related thereto. Whereas in June 2021, South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs notified County Veterans Affairs Offices of the opportunity to compete for a state-funded Veterans Cemetery. And whereas the minimum eligibility requirement included the donation of no less than 60 acres of land. And whereas, if selected, South Carolina will provide all costs from construction to operations and maintenance to lifecycle costs. And whereas, Mr. and Mrs. Thomas and Giovanna Purcell have graciously and generously agreed to donate a minimum of 60 acres of land located at the southwest corner of York County, Bonner Horton Road, Highway 322 and Highway 49. And whereas, both the South Carolina National Guard Civil Engineer Department and ESP Associates from Fort Mill, South Carolina, are offering to assist with the land survey and the Phase 1 environmental impact study, both at no cost to the county. And whereas, York County has 28,000 veterans and is the third fastest-growing county in South Carolina. And whereas, a local Veterans Cemetery will provide our community an additional way to pay homage to and honor the memory of those military veterans who have served our great nation. Now therefore, be it resolved, the York County Council hereby supports the initiative of the York County Veterans Affairs Office for the proposed state-funded Veterans Cemetery in York County, and hereby further directs York County management and staff to assist the Director of the York County Veterans Affairs to the furthest extent practicable in her pursuit of a York County-based Veterans Cemetery adopted this, the fourth day of October 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Winkler. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Roddy?
I just want to make a quick comment. I know back early this summer, several of our Rock Hill veterans reached out to me and first presented this idea. And I'll, I'll say honestly, when he said they were looking for someone to donate this massive piece of land, I said, "Well, good luck with that in Rock Hill." And obviously, they were able to beat the bushes and go outside of our immediate area.
And I definitely want to thank the Purcell family, who graciously blessed this outfit in this community with the opportunity to be able to move forward with such a huge undertaking of, of our 28,000 veterans that we have in the area. And I think this is going to be one of those landmark features that we still have here in York County as well, along with some of our other parks and great things that we're doing. And obviously, I'm a big military supporter. I have several family members who, who have served in the military. So definitely, this will be some welcoming news to them as this project moves forward. So thank you for your hard work and dedication to make this happen.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I did want, yeah, also want to thank, yeah, again, thank you and the Purcell family. And what the donation and in, in the work here that you've done to get this moving. This is an absolute honor to have something like this in our county. So I think it's a fantastic opportunity and to honor our military and our veterans. Excellent.
Any other comments? Melinda, thank you again for your tenacity, and we thank the Purcell family. We'll have to have them back to thank them personally. All those in favor of the resolutions, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, resolution passes. We turn back now to our public hearing, hearings. Public hearing one, rezoning action, hold public hearing and consider first reading case number 21-16, tax map number 651-0000-084, 651-0000-101, to rezone from RD1 to BD3, Council District 1. Mr. Bono?
Yes, good evening, members of council. So this application is to rezone these four parcels shown here in this aerial from RD1 to BD3. Three of those parcels have an existing single-family home on them, and there's a campground to the north, and obviously, it's on Gold Hill Road. So here is a conceptual site plan for the property. The applicants are proposing to have a selection of different businesses on the property, which include a daycare, an office building, a drive-through bank, and some retail and potentially a restaurant. Staff recommends approval of this application as it conforms to the comprehensive plan and what it is asking for in this area. And by a vote of five to three, the planning commission also recommends approval of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Bono. Any questions?
Yeah, I just, I'd just like to say real quick, I said this, I applaud this opportunity here. I think in that location, it would be a perfect opportunity for the people in that area. Well-needed, again, I do support this. Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this request?
Second.
Motion and a second to close. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes to close the hearing. Do we have a new motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Rezoning action, hold public hearing and consider first reading case number 21-17, tax map number 553-0000-092, zoning request to rezone from RUD1 to BD1, 4.88 acres in District 2.
Yes, this is the existing location of Lake Point Academy. Property is zoned RUD, and the proposal is to go to BD1. It's off of Hansmill Highway. This is a concept site plan. The applicant proposes to use the two existing buildings that are on the site for a gymnastics center. So these are the two maps for the area. The one on the left is the zoning map. So you can see the property is zoned RUD. Most of the properties around it are also zoned either RUD or some other residential district. The darker purple to the east there would be the portions of the property of the nuclear power plant. There is one parcel to the south that is zoned BD3, and I'll cover that in a moment. For the comprehensive plan, you can see virtually all of it is proposed for single-family residential land uses in the future, as well as that purple being the power plant. So staff is recommending denial of this application, and there's a couple reasons for that. Chiefly, it does not conform to the county's comprehensive plan. In order to have a business use in the single-family future land use designation, the plan was really asking to have either an intersection of major roads or for there to be an adjacency to an existing commercial use. Neither of those are present in this application. And then I'll also point out that you can see all of the existing single-family homes there. So it also would not conform all that well with the BD1 district. That BD3 parcel to the south was rezoned originally for the purposes of creating a multifamily development. That has not gone forward, but that property, because of the large power line easement that runs over it, is unlikely to be improved with another business. Then lastly, I can get back there. So whenever staff looks at these applications, we consider what might occur on that property if the applicant were to not be able to execute their own plan, or if it were to fail in the future or be redeveloped. Some of the other BD1 uses include a car wash, fast food service, convenience stores. All of those would be more disruptive to single-family uses that are in the surrounding area. So that covers staff's recommendation. However, by a vote of seven to one, the planning commission did recommend to approve this application, subject to three conditions, and those being, the first, access shall be limited to Ferguson Long Road, and that would cut off the access point on Hansmill Highway, and that should be removed. The second being that the existing parking lot must be paved and striped according to county standards. And the last being that the required improvements must be complete prior to occupying the property with the new use, the gymnastics center.
Thank you, Jonathan. Are there any questions of staff? I just want to make one clarification. The Michael Cox, who's the applicant, is not the gentleman who lives with me. It's a totally different person, just so everyone knows that.
So even after the planning commission's request for the following conditions, staff still couldn't find a common ground to say, "Yeah, we would support it that way," versus just still a denial?
Staff doesn't often change our recommendation after a planning commission occurs. We typically do all of our analysis on the front end of the process. These conditions were recommendations that staff gave to the planning commission in the event that they opted to approve the application. So there's some foresight on staff's part that, you know, we still recommend denial, but in the event that it is approved by planning commission and county council, that there at least be the conditions that are applied here.
So since the planning commission adopted, or basically took in consideration and put in what you guys have recommended, what are staff sitting down with these in there?
Even with the conditions in there, like I said, we stand by our recommendation of denial because it does not conform with our adopted comprehensive plan.
Any other questions of staff before we move to public hearing? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? If you'll come forward and state your name and give your address.
Hello, my name is Michael Cox. Actually, my wife's name is Kristy. Kind of ironic, no relation. I've never met you before, but my name's Michael. Nice to meet y'all. My address is 5971 Johnson Road, Clover, or Lake Wiley South Carolina, whatever you want to call it. I live by the 711, the new 711 that's on Hansmill, and 555. So I'm trying to help out a local business gymnastics studio that's currently in a not-zoned, correct building. And they have been asked to either outfit their current location where they're at in a storage facility, or move. And so I'm here trying to help out a local business. I'm a local person. I got two daughters that are in gymnastics. In fact, I'm the head coach of their softball team, which I'm missing tonight, and hopefully, they won. So I'm not a big developer. I'm literally just a local person trying to help out a local business in Lake Wiley. And either the kids go to Gastonia, or Charlotte, or Rock Hill for gymnastics. There's not one in, in Lake Wiley unless you guys approve this eventually, hopefully. I have the Lake Wiley people here, the, excuse me, Lake Point people here as well, to kind of explain what's going on. But my goal is just to help out a local business here in Lake Wiley. It won't cause a lot of confusion. I did do a little like a ice cream social for the neighbors that live on Ferguson Long Road. And one person showed up, one person was able virtually, and neither one of them opposed me. The only thing they asked is, "Don't let it be a Dollar General." That was the only thing they asked for. I said, "Well, I don't, I don't have the funds to do a Dollar General. I'm just trying to purchase property." Just so you guys know, I was under contract on another property that was just straight land. That was already zoned BD3. But as, after I found out how expensive it was to build in the overlay area, I just couldn't simply afford to do it. So this was an opportunity for me to have something that's already built. I don't plan on expanding it. The buildings are there that are previously been built for 10-plus years. All I want to do is make it a gymnastics studio. So you guys, am I asked to questions or?
We don't typically do questions. We just listen to the public, in the public room. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of this request?
Good evening. I'm Ken Rogers, 2398 Gordon Road in Rock Hill, South Carolina. I'm with Lake Point Academy. A privilege again to be here this evening with y'all. And just wanted to encourage you that the administration, the board, the staff, the families that are interested in moving to our future location are encouraging and hopeful for your support as we divest of this particular location in favor of a, while BD1 is different. It's a gymnastics school is the way it's described to us, but that does not qualify for RUD. And so we're hopeful that y'all will support the development of a gymnastics school in that particular location for the highest best good of Lake Wiley and that community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor?
Thank you. My name is Lewis Lemon, 3068 Van Hook Drive in York, South Carolina. I am also with Lake Point Academy. And I just want to point out to those of you who do not get the pleasure of driving down Hansmill Highway all the time, everything seems to be where that front edge is going toward business. I know that that doesn't explain the plan and everything. It looked heavily residential when I saw it on the map. And I'm scared our school is currently located that close to a nuclear power facility. I prefer not to look at the overhead map. My point is simply this, that there are five lanes on Hansmill Highway that didn't used to be. So much has changed on that strip. And I dropped off my son. We get to benefit from using the park that has been built in Lake Wiley for soccer and other purposes. It is gorgeous. Lake Wiley is not what it was like when I first went to Lake Point 17 years ago. And I do agree, I'm fascinated with the river bend. I won't go there, but I'll be using it. And even though it doesn't seem like it, a gymnastics studio kind of contributes in the same vein because our families I work with a lot, maybe we like our recreation too much. But our families do love gymnastics and training and the bodily part of education in addition to the academic. And so I just ask you to consider where that five-lane highway is going and to recognize that I don't think it's going to negatively impact the heavily, current heavily residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move close.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Ms. Love?
So in Lake Wiley, we have an overlay, and that overlay does not allow for metal buildings. And generally, when something like this type of business would be coming to our area, that's exactly what they would need to, to have. This is, all, all of those homes that are around there, they need a place for gymnastics. We have a gymnastics place now that is, that is, they are discontinuing that. They're not going to allow that use there. The owner is not going to allow that use there. So there's been a big need for gymnastics in the area for, for a couple of years now. And, and I know that this, this applicant has looked at other properties, and there was just not anything that really lent itself to, to what they need. However, this property lends itself to exactly what they need. And I've been out, I've toured it, I'm very familiar with the property. And I'm glad to see that staff recognizes that car washes, fast food, convenience stores are all disruptive to single-family, because what we have the most of in Lake Wiley is single-family. And we are very disrupted by that. So what I would like to do tonight is pass this and bring back to you at second reading a proposal of mine that would alleviate the issue of that ever becoming a car wash or fast food convenience store, those things that are disruptive to single-family. And so I will be talking with the applicant on this and coming up with what I feel like is a great solution for this. Highway 274 is a five-lane road that welcomes development. It rolls out the red carpet for business. So in, in my opinion, this, this is needed. I am okay with this as the person who looks out for the people in that district, the last person who wants to see another car wash or fast food or convenience store. And I am supportive of this going forward.
Just want to clarify, the motion includes the conditions, correct?
Yes, it does include the conditions, yes.
That was my question.
Mr. Roddy?
I was just going to say real quick, I think that's why me and Allison get along so well. We always try to find ways to make things work versus not always saying that they won't work or we don't support them. And staff hasn't given me enough reason not to support it unless staff comes back and says, "Here's the ultimate reason why we don't support it, even with the conditions that we, we sent over to the planning commission." I look forward to supporting it, and good luck on the gymnastics.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just want to just kind of follow up in regards to your comments. Yeah, looking at this and looking at the location, the fact that the, the size of the highway that's going by there, I mean, it, it appears to be a great opportunity, you know, from a business perspective, you know, from a traffic- you know, from a traffic flow, I don't foresee, you know, based on something that many lanes would be problematic for that location. So I will be in support of it tonight also.
Any other comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Rezoning action. Hold a public hearing and consider first reading case number 21-18, tax map number 694-000038 to rezone from UD to RC1, 10.35 acres in District 5.
Yes, this is, this final one is a funky-looking parcel here and wants to rezone from UD to RC1. So the applicant is proposing to create a six-lot residential subdivision. The parcel sizes range from one to three acres. Staff recommends approval of this application. It forwards the county's goal of eliminating the UD district. And also, the comprehensive plan shows this area being planned for neighborhood residential. And this would create a new residential subdivision, albeit a small one. So that furthers the plan. And by a vote of eight to zero, planning commission also recommends approval of this application.
Thank you Jonathan. Any questions? Thank you. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move closed.
Second.
Motion and a second to close. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a new motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider a third reading of an ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of not exceeding $10 million aggregate principal amount of general obligation bonds of York County, South Carolina to defray the cost of acquiring properties for green space conservation, historic restoration, passive recreation, and interactive preservation parks district and the cost of issuance thereof and other matters relating thereto. Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry, public hearing. Anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Second.
Motion and a second to close, public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do we have a new motion?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. We move now to number three in new business. Counsel discussion and direction on Rock Hill, York County Convention and Visitors Bureau. Were we going to have a presentation or?
I don't think management has a presentation on this. So I guess since it came out of financing operations, I guess I'll kick the discussion off. I think all council members have seen what management's recommended in the past. There were three options they gave to us. The first option was pretty much kicked out right away, which was just to do nothing. Option two is to keep it, and this has been fleshed out a little more by management some, but to keep it under county umbrella and redo the ordinance so that each municipality who gives money to the CVB would get a seat on the board along with seven counties, council seats. Each seven of us would appoint one person from our area, and then the other seats would be divvied up with municipalities that are putting money in the pot with it. And we have the option, and this option or otherwise, to increase the money that's going to the CVB or whoever it may be in option three with the state accommodations tax because we have not allocated all of that. And there's more money that can be allocated to that. But what would be done with this is our county attorney and staff would work to put in parameters, guidelines, as to how the county, the money that comes from the county, from the ATAX and stuff, would be able to be spent by the CVB to make sure that it's spent in the county, in the unincorporated areas and how it's done. And the wording would also be in there that if at any time we became concerned about how things were being spent or otherwise, it could be, we could request a full audit. But it would not require Billy and the CVB to come before us every year to justify their entire budget when their entire budget does not come from us anymore. Then option three still gives us the option of giving more state ATAX than we have. But what it would do would be allow the CVB to no longer be the Visit York County organization. Option three, the organization would be part of Rock Hill Parks and Tourism. They would be designated as our marketing agent, and they would get the funds. But there would be no Visit York County. I guess it would be Visit Rock Hill PRT at that point, since there would be the ones getting the funds. That's pretty much the overlay. A couple of things I want to say, I guess since it's just a discussion and since I'm opening it up, I've already voiced a couple of my concerns in that it would be, you know, there would be no Visit York County. And Visit York County has spent quite a bit of money over the last few years in developing Visit York County and marketing and websites and everything that they've done for that, which would no longer be. So all that would be gone, you know, just flushed away because there can't be Visit York County if it's Rock Hill PRT. And the other thing that I have a question on, and I'm not sure if Mr. Kendry had the opportunity to find out yet, but I believe there's about five years left on the lease for the building that Visit York County has right now in downtown Rock Hill. And if they become a part of the city of Rock Hill and they move their offices into city buildings, I'm sure the gentleman that owns that building is not just going to say, thank you, I appreciate it, we'll find somebody else to lease this building. Somebody's on the hook for five more years of lease payments. And I'm concerned that that's us at the county level, since it's currently a county board. So I have several concerns about it going to the city of Rock Hill. And I personally prefer, and you all know this from everything I've said for the last two years, that it stay under the county and be a part of the county, but in no way, shape, or form require the CVB to come begging to us every year to approve a budget when we give them less than 10% of their budget.
So would that, so what you were speaking of is would be deemed to be option two, I guess, within?
Yes. And option three is the city of?
Okay, yeah. I mean, listening to what you've stated, I, you know, I like what I'm hearing in regards to, I think further discussion would be needed. But I think that, you know, based on having a seat per district, I think is good. I think that more discussion would be needed, but I think I would be leaning towards option two.
I got a few questions here. Number one, as far as rewriting the ordinance, is that something that we can do? Restructuring the board?
We can amend the ordinance, absolutely.
Okay. That's one. Also, one of our biggest problems is how much is this going to delay the CVB right now? If I'm not mistaken, they're already behind for getting marketing set up for next year. And if we're continuing to delay this, I guess the point being is we need to make a decision whether we are going to continue being Visit York County or allow them to move on to PRT.
And that's why it's for the full discussion tonight, because I think they need direction.
It needs to happen very quickly. As far as the requesting the audit, are we saying that we want to audit their entire budget? Or we're just wanting to audit what we are giving them in ATAX?
I mean, they pay for an audit every year anyway. So they're audited every year. So I'm sure they're fine with us auditing everyone to do it, but I don't know. I'll leave that to county management and attorney as to which way we want that audit. I don't, you know, I don't have a preference either way on that. I do know they're audited every year. They pay for an outside audit every year, so.
Okay. So this would keep Visit York County in place, us having board seats, but the municipalities who are contributing having board seats as well, and us having less control?
Yes.
Over Visit York County, correct?
There'd be earmarks conceptually on the expenditures and the devil certainly is in the details on working that through and specifying the extent of that designation in the ordinance, which is something we'd have to work through with management.
Okay. If we were able to come to an agreement on that, is that something that's going to delay the CVB? That would be my next question. Can anyone answer me that?
If anyone on staff can answer that.
I'm sorry, I was asking about another item.
Can we come up with a solution under option two that would not put CVB in a position of problem?
I think part of, and I'm, what I understand, because I've been involved in it, but I think there's other people can answer it better, is part of the holdup right now is they don't know who they are or who they're going to be next month.
Right.
So if we at least come up with what our recommendation is and get management started, my understanding is they can at least start moving forward. But right now, they don't know if they're going to be Rock Hill or York County or what they're going to be, so.
Mr. Roddy?
I just have a quick question. What's being delayed as far as operational?
Advertising. So whenever you're doing print advertising, you always have to plan ahead of time. If you don't know what logo or you don't know what name that you're going to be, then you don't know how to proceed forward.
They don't know if they're going to be Visit York County, and that's what they need to be putting on their logos and everything, or if they're going to be Rock Hill PRT, and that's what they need to be advertising.
I think in terms of a discussion, I think we need to hear from everyone sitting up here. I'm happy to give mine if folks are still contemplating.
I have a couple of questions too, but just to make sure everyone's done.
I'll just make mine is, I'm in favor of keeping it Visit York County, because like we've said, so much has gone into that brand the last several years. We've made a financial commitment to promote that, invest money in that. So I would err on the side of keeping it Visit York County as well as keeping it under York County, not turning it over to the city of Rock Hill. And if there's a way that we could channel more fund through the ATAX, I think that's definitely an option. And being that, no, we wouldn't want to have them come make a presentation every, every year on such a small portion of their budget. That could be, that can be basically like the designated marketing agent, just like we did with Keystone, you know. But we still need to have them under somewhat our umbrella because I think it bodes well for the county. It speaks of the whole entire county versus just being a Rock Hill branch, a Rock Hill arm. I would feel comfortable with that option. I think that's option number two that you mentioned. So I would be in favor of structuring something around that and keeping it Visit York County, and we can move forward and work on some of the other details that we need to work out for that organization for stability and going forward. Because I thought one of the, I thought you were going to say they need to continue to recruit years out, because I know so much of what they do, recruit events, two, three years down the road. And I thought that's what you was going to say about the holdup. But obviously, the marketing piece of who we are does make a difference when you're even, one, recruiting events, and two, when you're getting set to advertise events that may be happening December or January coming up. So, you know, we need to lock in.
Key words especially now.
I'm in favor of one of these.
Okay.
I have a few questions. Under proposal number two, what percentage of the CVB's budget, even if we allocated all of our ATAX dollars, just hypothetically, what percentage of the CVB's budget would that represent?
I'm going to go with the, all of the state ATAX, you're probably looking at somewhere between 20 and 25, 20, 25% of the budget. That's based off a budget of about one and a half million dollars. If my math is right there, maybe a little, no.
I think it's closer to 10 or 12.
Probably 15 to 20. 15 to 20 is probably a better number.
Yeah, I thought maybe a little lower than that. 10 to 15 is probably more, more based on what I remember.
So under that proposal, we'd have 10 or 15% of the budget. How many board seats would there actually be? So there would be seven from council? So we would have at least close to 50% of the board seats, but only contributing 10 or 15% of the budget? So the county would, each district would have, would appoint a board member, but each municipality would appoint one board member? Is that what the proposal is?
That's part of, well, I think, my thought was depending on how much money the municipalities support, give, you know, one might get two seats or something. But that's still part of the finer details, I guess, management and county attorney have to work out on that part of it. They didn't want to start the ordinance until they knew which ordinance to start on. So they're trying to get that from us tonight. So I think manager over there was wanting to say something.
Well, I think that we've discussed a lot of different things, but the breakdown is currently is 15 all appointed by the county. We would probably suggest one per council district, one at large, so the county would still maintain the majority of the seats, and then seven be divvied up among the municipalities. I think council can do that however they'd like to do it. That was kind of our suggested path forward on that.
One of my other questions is, you know, I've heard that, I'm just fleshing all this out, I've heard that the municipalities may decline to participate or continue to fund the CVB if it was no longer a county agency. Can anyone here speak to that or confirm if that's been?
They, well, I'll say this, they have not communicated that to us. I think the city of Rock Hill understands that's a possibility in their model that they put together, and they're prepared for that. But I don't, I don't, we haven't had discussions directly with any municipality said that they would pull funding. But that does remain a possibility.
Okay. And Mr. Kendry, I didn't hear if you had provided an answer. I'm sorry. Do we know the status of the lease?
I do not know. I'm going to confer with.
I can speak to that.
Thank you.
I don't remember the exact number of years. I think it may be three, but I don't want to be held to that. There is a balance of years left on that lease. We would expect to pay that. What the proposal for, proposal number three is there is a fund balance that is held by the organization as it currently stands. That's several hundred thousand dollars, probably between a half million and a million by the time it's all fiscal year would end. What has been proposed is that that money would be set in trust to pay things like the lease, a rebranding of the organization, because it was no longer be Visit York County, it'd be something else. So some money that would be set aside in order to cover those type of costs, what we consider to be hard costs. There would be some, hopefully after all those costs were paid for the transition, there would still be some money left in their fund balance. And that would be proposed as per the proposal we gave to be distributed out for tourism-related activities, just like the annual amount would be divvied up. So there had to be some disbursement of those funds they had on hand. Some would be to pay out old expenses, and some would be in the way of allocations approved by county council, just like they would approve the annual allocation.
That brings up a question for me, if I could. So what you're saying is the CVB's done a good job over the last several years of saving up money for some future expenses and stuff. And what we would be doing is using all, most of that money to buy ourselves out of a lease and to rebrand the organization into an organization that Rock Hill controls. But we'd be using the money that CVB has saved all this time to rebrand the marketing for the city of Rock Hill.
Well, yeah, I don't know if I'd say most, but a significant portion of what had been allocated, some of that is for the purpose of doing capital projects, tourism-related capital projects. And we would still expect it to be used for that. But some of their current fund balance would be used for rebranding and the hard costs associated with the transition.
That's only on option three, right?
Yeah, that is correct.
How much money's been saved up? Do we have an idea how much money's been saved up? Because when I heard the term CVB is saved. When I heard the term CVB is saved up, you know, we approve a budget every year and if they're not, they weren't spending that money, they just shuttered it off to the side and said it's savings?
It was savings. My understanding is for eventually, you know, they knew that they were in Baxter Hood, that they may need to buy a place. And I think they were looking at one point on buying a place to have their own office instead of renting from everybody else. And that was my understanding. They were doing that for that and for being a good steward as the county does and setting aside a portion in case things go south and they need money to live on for a while.
Now, we went through a bit back and forth the last several years about budgets. And then it's kind of deflating to hear that, hey, we've shuttered off some of this money to the side, but we're going back and forth fighting over budgets. That seems a little disingenuous.
Well, we can provide an accounting of that. Some of that is their current fiscal allocation.
Okay.
So it's what we allocated this year. They just haven't spent all of it. Some of it is what they have saved up for capital projects to be dispersed for tourism-related capital projects. So I wouldn't necessarily classify it as just some surplus without any reason for having it. And again, a lot of those would currently be spent for their current expenses, because that's their current year allocation. So, but there is some amount of money that's going to be left and would, and there are some expenses or liabilities that would have to be satisfied. And that's what we would propose to use some of that money for. And whatever was left would stay in a capital account to be distributed for tourism-related expenses. And we could try and quantify exactly what that is. I mean, I don't have that for you tonight, but we could.
I still have a few more questions, if you don't mind. Under option three, or at least I should say under option two, there seems to be an assumption that that's the only option, that the CVB would continue to market events in unincorporated areas? If we went with option three, would that particular entity, if we so chose to be our designated marketing agency, would they then continue to market events in unincorporated areas of the county?
Yes, and that would be part of their contractual responsibilities to market events throughout York County. And also they would come to the county every year with an approved budget. They would have to compete for the discretionary money that we give out each year for specific projects. So if those, they'd have to demonstrate that they benefited the county in its entirety. Some would be in Rock Hill, but again, that's something they would come back to you every year. Because you would still have the tax, the recreate, the tourism tax, the H-tax, ATAX, that would be distributed on an annual basis by our tax commission that would stay in place. Did I get that right?
Correct. We have a committee for the state accommodation tax. The committee meets every year and they make recommendations and y'all have tweaked that almost every year in the last three, four years. The committee has met and has made a recommendation. We've waited to put that on the agenda for y'all because y'all can always override that recommendation. Y'all could theoretically give just the 30% to the CVB or to the city of Rock Hill who's our DMO. And the rest of that is up to your discretion. That's that money when we talked about earlier at finance and operations meeting. The city believes that a better estimate on the revenue for ATAX would be $150,000. There's some additional money that's available really under all these options that council still controls on the state ATAX. And in option three, that was sort of presented as revenue for there. And management wanted to make sure that everybody understood that was a viable option under option one, two, and three. I'll go and say this while I got the microphone. I guess we did today when myself, Mr. Hudson and Mr. Kendry were meeting to go over these different options. Option three, we discussed the, you know, I don't think anybody up here wants to have the CVB come visit us during budget time, maybe around Christmas, but not budget time. In order to get to there, there became some questions or concerns around the, their ability to still have their employees participate in the state retirement. I think that's important to all of y'all. Mr. Kendry had a phone call with PIBA. I was on the call as well and that's a question that they're going to look into, one of the comments, you know, the makeup of that board. And are we modifying our current ordinance or are we creating a new entity? So there's some devil in the detail and as we go through that process, I think all of y'all, what's important is you want to make sure we maintain the state retirement for those employees. And I think that needs to be vetted in PIBA. The gentleman at PIBA, we spoke to, one of the brightest guys that spoke at PIBA, he made a point to say he didn't want to define, opine on that definitively until he let their attorneys review our proposed agreement. Did I summarize that right, Michael?
Yes, that's right.
I have one more question for Michael and then I'm done, but are there other, because so much activity that the CVB engages in isn't to the future, are there any contractual concerns? Or are we concerned about the assignability of any concerts or any contracts? Or the services that those contracts require of the CVB if we were to go with an option other than number two?
Great question. We need to look at those existing contracts and see what the assignability details are, if any. And so that's a fair, fair concern. There are none currently that I'm aware of that have been raised to our office, but we would certainly want to look on those on a case-by-case basis and report back to management and council if anything stood out.
Okay. We still have a good bit of things and an individual who's waited a good long while to have here on the agenda. So I think everybody's had their say. I'll finish up with mine. I support number two. I mean, I think we had a handful of citizens come out here basically asking us to start working cooperatively and to continue to do that. I think this retaining the Visit York County is important to the citizens as the ones who who invested in that. I think if there's a way to work out the structure of the board that gives more input from the municipalities who participate as well as the public sector, because the county, it sounds like maybe 15 to 20% if we input additional ATAX, which is all the, I have supported that request and I do support that request. That makes sense for ATAX to go to that. It's directly related to accommodations tax. So I think all of those things, I would support number two. Obviously there's some questions that need to be answered, but I think the reality is, is that the county participates, I guess, the largest part of any governmental entity participation. There's a lot of private entities that have most of the participation on this and I would not be opposed to having, you know, a couple of those folks serving on the board since they are the ones who directly, you know, can come back and tell us whether or not the initiatives that the the board is doing are reaching them as best they can. So I would support that. I would support the increased ATAX and I would support number two pending any concerns coming out of the rest of the management or staff. It sounds like we've got some questions to get answered.
And we ask that management look at those as expeditiously as possible because
Oh, yeah.
we're just.
I think, I definitely think that everyone's echoed here that let's ramp that up. I know that the CVB is requesting that and I think we owe that to them as well as to the citizens on carrying on that board. So if we can expedite that, that would be great. Committee and other reports, it doesn't look like we have any. We do have a citizen concern, so I would ask that we go ahead and unless there are any comments or non-agenda comments from council members?
Yeah, I do have one.
Okay.
So I've come across something that I think is really critical to our area. Recently I was working with some elderly, retired elderly citizens that are important, that are going, needing rides to doctors, you know, treatments, those types of things. So we reached out to the York County on aging and looked at their transportation services through access. You know, and on our website, it says that we have countywide access. Okay? So they reached out to them and put a request in with the person. They ran their address and found out they're actually not in their areas that deemed to be service-wise. So after further investigation, identified that both, a lot of Tega Kay and a lot of Fort Mill is not included. I'm not sure about any of the other outlying districts here. But I would recommend that the staff, and I know David, you and I have talked about this, but we really move heavily on this to address this issue and to move forward to cover the entire county. Because we've got elderly out there that are needing to go to doctor's appointments, they're needing to go to treatment. And it's critical that we're covering the entire county. Very critical.
Any other? Mr. Winkler?
One quick one. It's not exactly on the agenda, so I'd like to ask for one of the council members' support on this so that we can get it on the next agenda, because I believe that's what it takes, is two council members to put something on the agenda. I would like to see the next council agenda to have the ATAX committee's recommendation to us on what to spend the rest of the ATAX on and us to vote on what to do with the rest of that, which I would hope would be to give the rest of it to the CVB, whichever version of the CVB it is. But if they've already met and got a recommendation, then I would like to see that on the next agenda meeting if somebody will back.
I'll second that. I got you. You got your second.
Thank you.
Any other comments, non-agenda comments? Okay, we have Kerry Bishop to address the council regarding the New Indy paper plant.
I'd say thank you, but now I know it takes three of you to get on the agenda and I've spoken, or two, and I've spoken to three. How does this work? So I think we all know about the New Indy Paper Mill. I did this clip just to show you. 592 acres we're talking about with all of these lagoons and every single one of them has an issue except one. So most importantly, the aeration stabilization basin, which is 64 acres. Now, I've already requested that the county get involved and the county do something and I was already told that they could not do anything about emissions. But then I go on the South Carolina Pollution Control Act law and it turns out the county can. Section 48, 1-310 states that the county can enact a pollution, working with South Carolina DEHAC. Now, the reasons why I feel that we need to do that is because DEHAC brought the EPA in, because they admitted that they don't have enough experience. The EPA, and this goes to another slide I have, has the minimum risk level set at 70 ppb, but they also have Geyser studies showing it lower, 40 to 50 ppb with symptoms showing. Now, I was excited to speak tonight with the presentations we had. I didn't realize I would be at the very end. So keep in mind the veterans that they spoke about, the statistics that they spoke about. And people with pre-existing conditions, like our disabled veterans in our area, are the ones that are most susceptible to these four pollutants. Not just one, and that's the only one the EPA is requiring New Indy to test for. Hydrogen sulfide, there's methyl mercaptan, there's dimethyl disulfide and dimethyl sulfide. What else? New Indy was in denial for three months. So here's the problem. They self-report. If they were in denial for three months, they left it up to the community to report the issue. That's a problem. CDC and OSHA. This one, however, with continuous low-level exposure or at high concentrations, a person loses his ability to smell it. So, you know, I hear all these workers and all these locals and everything state, well, we don't smell it. I've been up there four times this week. I don't smell anything. The workers aren't complaining, so it must not be a big deal. This is why. It causes paralysis to your nerves in your nose and you can no longer smell it. I worked with styrene, which does the similar, you get used to it, so I know how it works. Now here's the Geyser studies I mentioned at 40 ppb, CAL EPA 1999. So we've known this. They use 30-minute averaging times and chronic averaging time is after one year. This is part of the main ambient air study. It's their state program that they enacted back in 2003, 2006, sorry. So, you know, we're already at eight months. It started in January. We're almost at one year. We're almost at chronic. I mean, and I take it seriously because I have a neurological condition. It affects me greatly. New Indy with their FLO plan, they were supposed to create, or sorry, they're supposed to create jobs and invest 400 million over eight years, but the terms of the FLO are 40, which I guess is confusing for me. Now, their 400,000, you know, I hear how much they invest in the community, they invest in the community and these are from the census data of 2019 and 2020. So we listened to the presenters before that and how much they talked about growth in this area. This number is only going to double. So I just want to clarify that the community members and the residents that live here invest more in our county than New Indy Paper Mill does. And they will continue to because we will continue to grow faster than they are continuing to grow. Job creation, per the FLO, they were supposed to create jobs. Now, back when they were purchased in 2019, there is an article on the York County website stating that they employ 460 employees. If you were to go to their website right now, they currently employ 450. They've been here since 2019. Did you know that the town of Waxaw in 2020 and 2021, during a pandemic, and it's, it applies because the town of Waxaw is affected by New Indy? It gets the toxic odor. They created, their businesses in the town created 121 jobs during a pandemic. So how come New Indy hasn't? When it's part of their FLO? We were told job creations and added to the tax base. I mean, I personally do not care about the tax base if I have increased medical healthcare, because the county's not paying my medical bills. So I could care less about what New Indy contributes to our tax base. It's causing medical issues. This was before May 26th and it's only gotten worse. 750 nausea, 670 headaches, nose and throat 370 and eye irritation was 360. And I did my own study in my own group and there was more and more symptoms than that. It also causes coughing, difficulty breathing and asthma flare-up. So asthma, you know, medical issues are a problem. So these are their three of their basins. The primary clarifier, which they've already dredged the top of, still has a ton of subtle sludge. Their equalization basin is 75% full of sludge, but that's not just it. It's all vegetative growth, all of it. I mean, there's a ditch around the whole thing and an inlet and that's it. The rest is vegetated because they haven't bothered to maintain. I've got a list of their dredging on the aeration stabilizer. I mean, they went months without maintaining. And I don't have anything saying that this one's ever been dredged. So you've got several issues with these three basins right here. The primary clarifier, the equalization basin, all send sludge to the aeration stabilization basin. They knew this from a 2017 process change. The county might not have known this, but New Indy did. So they then removed the foul condensate steam stripper and are sending it to the bottom lagoon shown in the photos. That is nasty and doesn't operate properly because it's full of sludge. I mean, 80, 90% covered with blanket sludge. It's 20 feet deep and the sludge on top was three to four feet, three to four feet thick deep. I mean, that's absurd. And their environmental manager has now admitted that they knew there was issues prior to the conversion, because they have baffles that make the water stay in the aeration so it could be treated more to increase retention time. And those were circum with sludge prior to New Indy even purchasing. So this process change should have never happened. They used air modeling from 2016. Well, Too Bad Resolute did a process change in 2017, so there goes that air modeling right out the window. Then they did an addendum to take the steam stripper out, used water modeling from the EPA and NA, I forget the abbreviations, NA, some government agency. But that goes out the window if their air modeling went out the window and they didn't account for the status of their lagoons, because they didn't bother to fix the process changes that would cause this. So they still have stuff being sent to, you know, the EQ basin, the primary clarifier gets into the aeration stabilization basin. That's how it got so loaded with fiber. No backups, no nothing. They still continue to do it. They're planning to fix it, but they don't tell us when. They'll give us no times, no dates. So you guys want to go and spend 58 million on a river bank, river park? I don't want my tax money spent on that because I might not be able to enjoy it. Simple as that. So I'm going to leave with saying, I forgot this one part. And this is, this is why I want the Pollution Control Act and I don't feel they should have a FLO either. So every time you peel back a layer of the stinky onion, it's worse. I haven't found one good thing that I can say New Indy did during the time that they have been in York County. Not a single one. New Indy can't be trusted and the county invited them here with the fee and lieu tax agreements, and this is a quote from the FLO. "The execution and delivery of this agreement by the county has been instrumental in inducing the company to locate the project to the county. It's the county's responsibility to act, institute a Pollution Control Act and rescind New Indy's FLO until they stop dragging." New Indy's Philo until they stop dragging our feet and poisoning us all." That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Any questions?
Just to, we typically don't ask questions, but I would like to just make the council aware that when we met a few weeks ago, I did on behalf of the council, asked them to look on, asked county management and our county attorney to look into the Philo and pointed them to the concerns that you had raised, and also asked them to take a look at that to see if there was anything that reflected that they had violated that. I was advised that there was not and that they were in compliance with their Philo. That Philo was executed after the issues came to light, but it's also my understanding that this will be an annual review as well. The Department of Revenue overlooks that part with respect to the other issues. And I think we've reached out to let you know that what we were being advised is the EPA, and the federal and the state laws preempted council action. I did advise them of the ordinance that you raised, and if there's any additional information that our county attorney wants to provide...
The Philo was enacted in 2019, so I guess I'm confused as to why you say it was after.
Mr. Kendry, if you have any other comments, if you want to say from a legal standpoint?
Sure. We believe there are two pending orders in place that New Indy is subject to. There's an ongoing compliance order that they're overseeing the emissions and the allegations against the plant, and I believe they're compliant and have been providing information to both EPA and DHEC. We checked with DHEC to see if there were any local counties or any counties within the state that have instituted their own pollution control plans, and they say there are none. The statutory section provides that the regulations implemented by the local county would need to be overseen by DHEC and approved, and that it would be a almost cost prohibitive to duplicate the services that are ongoing with the state. DHEC did bring EPA to assist in the oversight of New Indy, and as I mentioned at the outset, both have standing orders against the company.
Okay, but those orders only allow them more time to do nothing. We're nine months in. They used one dredger for I don't know how long, or one excavator to dredge for I don't know how long. I mean, we're talking 592 acres.
I think, we thank you for coming out and speaking out. I think all of that information's been taken in by council now and wanted to make sure that it was clear from a legal standpoint where we stand currently, but we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Do we have a motion for executive session?
We do. I move we go into executive session for the receipt of legal advice regarding consideration of a mediated settlement agreement for Project Riverview Road S-851 improvements, project number 11149-012, track numbers 12 and 13, also regarding a contractual matter relating to Project Thistle I, receipt of legal advice relating to the Fort Mill School District impact fees, receipt of legal advice relating to the Rock Hill TIF, and for a receipt of legal advice relating to potential trademark park names. And I believe that's all the reasons to go into executive session unless I'm missing one.
I'll second then.
We have a motion and a second for executive session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we will move into executive session. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Do we have any motions?
We do. Our first motion is to approve the proposed $24,625 allocation for Project Thistle I.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our second motion is to approve a mediated settlement agreement for Project Riverview Road improvements, project number 11149-012, relating to track numbers 12 and 13 as discussed in executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our third motion is to approve the name of the park as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Our third motion, or fourth motion, is to authorize the county manager to issue and sign on behalf of the county correspondence to the city of Rock Hill, objecting to and not consenting to the South Side redevelopment plan TIF as discussed in executive session, and that the county reserves its right to consider future participation or an intergovernmental agreement regarding the redevelopment of this area.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Mr. Roddy?
I won't be long. First, I want to say I'm all on board with the Clinton connection and the wonderful excitement that it's already brought to the South Side of Rock Hill and what it will bring to the South Side of Rock Hill in the very near future. It's obvious to myself and many other community leaders throughout Rock Hill that the city of Rock Hill has neglected this area for the past three decades while building up the city all throughout the rest of Rock Hill. I'm gravely concerned with the open-ended language that's been presented in the TIF as it's written currently. And when I say that, I'm referring to language that allows TIF funds to be removed from a designated TIF area to be used outside of the TIF. And so that's, to me, we can't move forward with language such as that. And there are several other things that concern me because this is too big of an issue, too big of a project to move forward with language that leaves the TIF, this current South Side TIF, open to money being taken elsewhere. And I think this is too important to the South Side, it's too important to this community for me to support a TIF that has this open-ended language. And also, the city hasn't presented us, meaning York County, with any city-sponsored infrastructure projects for us to consider moving forward. And I think that's one of the main things that all of us have looked at and really want to make sure that we nail down because we don't want it to be an open-ended $225 million credit card where the city can just go and do projects that are not designated, that are not spoken for. It's just too important. But when we do approve this TIF in the very near future, I want to be able to offer assurances to the community, city residents, and those who are concerned about the South Side, that the language is really solid and it's bound, those who may be in charge at the city at the time is approved with language and not just on a good faith effort. I think this project to the South Side could be obviously a game changer. I think Clinton Connection has done a good job of setting forth its plans, but we have to make sure that the TIF is structured to support projects like the Clinton Connection and other projects that may come up with other private developers. We've seen TIFs do wonderful things, and I want to make sure that when the TIF is approved for the South Side, that it has every fighting chance to do the same wonderful things that we've seen over in Knowledge Park and some other areas around Rock Hill. And this is no knock on Clinton because I've met with Dr. McCone, and we're still going to meet, and I look forward to kind of still working through some of the challenges that the TIF is presenting right now, but at this time, I just don't think the language is there for us, York County, to move forward with a $225 million TIF at this time, so.
Mr. Winkler?
Just one quick thing. I've got all kinds of concerns with the TIF as that proposal was presented to us, but I've heard a lot of really good stuff about the Clinton Connection, and I have not seen that plan. So would you or someone listening, please send me the details for the Clinton Connection plan?
Absolutely.
I've heard a lot of good about it, but I've not seen it, and I'd like to just look at it.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Roddy said most of it.
I think so. I would like to say that, you know, this council I know is, and I should speak for myself more specifically, is generally supportive of economic development in this county, and I know it's very critical to bring additional economic development to areas that haven't seen it yet. And there are times when a TIF is the best tool in the toolbox for that, and there are times when we may want to consider the use of other tools, like we did for the Panthers in the use of a multi-county industrial park. So based off the information that we've received so far, it's difficult to make that determination. And I think, I for one, look forward to receiving additional information and to seeing how this plan continues to develop.
Any other discussion? I would just echo that one of the major concerns and one of the reasons why we've had problems in the past is because there is no detailed plan at all, no list of projects with associated costs, no promises in writing as to where the money will actually go, what will be prioritized, no concrete assurances that the blighted areas inside the city limits will get the funding. Again, the plan currently as it's written allows the funding to go outside of the area that's been designated, and to be a legally valid TIF, the property has to be, and we've been advised, it has to be inside the city limits. We understand that there are efforts to try and mass annex that. That is a problem that exists with the people in the community, and I would invite discussion and would have liked to have more than just some letter being presented to us, but us have a real meaningful discussion about how we can make the South Side, which is an area I'm very concerned about and is in my heart, come to fruition in a way that the taxpayers can. Trust is going to happen in an appropriate manner. So having said that, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. We are adjourned.